Five o'clock, I'll call a meeting to order. Would you call, roll call please. Councilperson Brandy?
Here.
Brandy? Harry?
Yes.
Hanson? McGinty?
Here.
Like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone here this evening. Thank you for being here. You may make comments on the items on the agenda as they are shown. And also, item number five is the citizens' opportunity to address items that are not on the agenda. So with that, we'll go on to item number two. Are there any conflicts of interest this evening?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to consent agenda. Number three, A, approval of agenda. B, approval of the minutes of the September ninth, 2014 council meeting. C, receipts and disbursements. D, fiscal year 2013-14 year-end transfers. E, consideration of resolution number 2104-17, entitled resolution approving 2014 fiscal year's street finance report. F, renewal license Viking Bay Sports Bar and Grill, Inc., doing business as Viking Bay Sports Bar and Grill, Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales. G, consideration of application by Joel, Zach, Jake, and Wade Williams, Mike Zimmerman, and Tom, and Tanner Crabbe, for a bowl license for hunting inside the city limits. Yeah, Curtis?
Curtis, please. Could you elaborate on the transfers?
There's a full copy of them. You're welcome to go look at, Curtis. They're all written out. They're basically built within the annual budget. They include anything from planned transfers, from the TNA accounts to the general funds, from the, to pay for debt service for certain utility elements, and for occupational fees and local option sales tax transfers.
How much do those, how much do those three items equal?
Which three items?
Any, or you said transfers?
All of the numbers are actually provided on the sheet. You can see it like, it's itemized.
I see.
On the sheet. So you're welcome to go over the sheet and take a look at all of them.
Thank you.
Jake, are there any other questions?
I would move passage of consent agenda. I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent of agenda. Are there any further questions? If not, please call her out. Councilperson McGinty? Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. We'll move on to number four, public carings. And now is the time and place for public carrying, a proposal to issue hospital facility revenue refunding bonds in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed eleven thousand five, no, eleven million five hundred thousand, and to loan the proceeds of the bonds to Loring Hospital. Have you had any written comments?
No.
Are there any oral comments? Curtis?
We had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, where you explained how this was not truly an eleven million dollar loan, eleven and a half million dollar loan. Could you go over the highlights of that?
Sure. They're all covered right here.
I understand.
The, the basic explanation kind of stands the way it was last time. And back in 2007, the hospital received use of, to bond against the city's bonding capacity for the purposes of their expansion project. And at this time, they were looking at refinancing that. So they'd be looking at refinancing the outstanding amount to pay off the existing bond, take out a new bond at a lower interest rate, therefore reducing the amount they're paying on a, on a, whether monthly or annual basis. I don't even know how you guys, both. And so right now, your outstanding bond balance, we're, I mean, we don't have visibility of that. Do you know what it is?
That's right at eleven million.
Right at eleven million. The way it impacts us, I've actually, past December 31st of this year, it had no direct impact on our financial capabilities.
Past December 31st?
Correct.
Prior to December 31st, if something comes up, what kind of impact could it have?
Well, in that period of time, and of course, it would take us a couple of months to even get a bonding scenario set up in our case. I would tell you that there would be no impact on this. It takes us, for, for us to go from start to actually bonding, takes a couple of months to do, Curtis. So by the time we would be ready to bond anything, it would be January before that time period anyway.
Okay.
So it wouldn't have any impact on us.
And this is going to act as pass-through money? Is that accurate?
Excuse me, I didn't hear a click.
I'm sorry. I asked if it was going to act as pass-through money for the...
I'm not real savvy how the city's involvement is. What, what my understanding is, there's no liability to the city at all. And since we're a 501(c)(3) corporation, the bonds will be, tax exempt at federal level. It has to pass through a municipality or government entity. I was maybe I misunderstood Indiana, but I, our bond company told me, in fact, I called to get a confirmation that, that we're not going to get some bonding support.
Yeah, I've had, I, I've actually had them give it to me both ways. I've had them tell me it would impact me through the end of the calendar year, and I've had them tell me that it wouldn't, it would impact me, it wouldn't have any impact at all on me. But irregardless, from our standpoint, Mike, if it would take me three months to set up a bond issue anyway, it, it's, it's irrelevant to whether we're going to do it for, for three December, or not three December. It's irrelevant from the purposes of our bonding ability.
Only for the record, I mean, the reason we're doing it, obviously, the interest rate climate has changed since '07. And so it's going to be substantial savings to us. We won't know the effective rate until they put the bond out on market, but it looks like they could cut interest rate approximately in half. So substantial savings over the life of the bonds. Why are we doing it now? Because bonds are not viable. You only enter into bonds, you can't pay them off through it. We've paid off some early ones as they staggered. And now we're approaching our payoff date or refinancing date. So that's what we're pursuing that for.
I've got another question that may more accurately answer what I, what I'm trying to ask. Is there going to be a point where you approve eleven million dollars moving through?
Not other than the fi, there'll be a signature period for the final agreements. But as far as you'll see money on our books going to their books, no, there will be none of that going on.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Basically, the email that you forwarded me from the accountant says that the only thing it would impact on our bonding capacity possibly would be five hundred thousand and change anyway. Five hundred and sixty thousand, the rest of it is, is a different, it's not really a general obligation bond, it's a...
Revenue. It's a special purpose bond, is technically, I believe, what they consider these type of bonds.
So it wouldn't be the same kind of bonding that we would necessarily be using for a street project or something like that anyways?
Is there anything else you think the public might need to know in order to fully understand what's going on here?
I, I would say that probably the most important point is it's a refinancing bond. It's basically replacing an existing bond. It's not expanding the time period for the bond, it's actually saving the hospital money. That's probably the, in a nutshell, that's what this is for.
Thank you.
We plan to keep our payments at the same level, so the three will be paying off by June.
And the bonds would be sold before the end of the year then?
Yes. To tell you what, Dave, I don't know if they will.
The only reason I'm asking is, I mean, I might try to be difficult, but I want to make sure that if they were not refinanced until January, if that would put it into our 215. But as long as they're doing it in 214, that's, that's to our benefit and to yours.
I think our goal is to start selling bonds maybe sometime in October.
May, October.
And then we can pay off the other bonds in December.
I would point out first, this was the same time schedule that this was done last time, particularly, I believe, because of that December type of discussion. It's advantageous to do this process in late, in the fall in order for this process to be concluded without having any general impact on the community.
I mean, I just, yeah, I think it's a wonderful idea, I just, yeah.
It's big numbers.
It, it's big numbers and I, you know, don't want, you know, my, my only concern was I didn't want to handicap what we could do.
Nor did we.
No, yeah, yeah, and I mean, that's, and that's, I think it's a wonderful project.
And that's why I called in right to get a couple days ago, because I was amused by that too. He informed me that it would not impact your bonding authority, that's above my pay grade, so. But he also made it very clear there's no liability to the city at all.
Right. And that's based on the fact that it's not established to a general obligation.
Is there any further discussion? Call for a motion to close the public hearing.
I would make such a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to close public hearing. Sandy, would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Brandy?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Number one, following its consideration of revolu, revolution, resolution, number 2014-18, entitled resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed eleven million five hundred thousand aggregate principal amount of hospital revenue refunding bonds, Loring Hospital project, and approving the execution of documents relating to the bonds and related matters.
I would move passage of resolution number 2014-18, entitled resolution authorizing the hospital to do all of the things that are listed there. I'll, I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded to, to approve resolution number 2014-18, the resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of not to exceed eleven million five hundred aggregate principal amount of hospital revenue funding, refunding bonds, Loring Hospital project, and approving the execution of documents relating to the bonds and related matters. Would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Harry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Item number five is citizens' opportu, uh, before I say that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Also Angie for being here.
It's one of the great assets that we have, and I can...
Well, just FYI, I asked Angie if all of the data, I think we're approximately 110 employees and our payroll is approximately 4.11 million dollars, so it's pretty significant for a people.
Very significant.
Oh, yes. And just the benefits you offer are significant as we are...
It's really important to have it here.
Posing for growth in the future, we need to have this medical community here.
It's a high-paying job for a young man.
In the future, if there's anything else that you could, you know, maybe say that...
No, because what's very unique about Loring Hospital, across the state, we're one of the very few hospitals that don't, that does not receive any tax dollars. That's pretty unusual. Ocahanas, we get some from the city, Bees, the county hospital, Humble. So it's pretty unusual. So far, not going to be able to survive without any tax dollars, which is highly unusual.
That's plastic.
So bound.
Thank you for calling.
Yeah, I want to, yeah, that's what I was saying over here.
Okay, now we'll do item number five, which is citizens' opportunity to address the council and items not on the agenda. Are there any this evening?
I have one to school site comment. I was out to visit Grand Truance weekend out in Henry, Illinois. And they did something really cool out there. They had, I don't know if this is a chamber, the city, or a collaborative effort between them, but at their city park, they had fire trucks, place cars, ambulance, construction equipment. They had a hot air balloon, it was too windy for that. School buses, equipment you can imagine. Family took the kids out, the kids got to climb on and play like the sirens. And I thought that would be something, I was going to approach a chamber, I mean, that's something to think about in the future sometime. I don't know if they want to do it in, with Oktoberfest, or, but I thought it was pretty cool. And the kids really had fun climbing on the stuff. I didn't ask the question, who's liable? I was afraid that... But it was really neat. It was the firemen, they took the little kids, they get them in the truck, turn on the sirens, and it was a pretty neat little event. I thought it was something kind of neat. So I was going to mention that to council, I was going to approach a chamber, maybe consider doing that sometime, in conjunction with some other event.
I'll talk with Brandy about it.
Yeah. You know...
Would be good to do it in conjunction with a Oktoberfest, because I hear of a lot of communities that have a community picnic, and that would be kind of like that.
Yeah, yeah, there's a national movement for, I think they call it neighborhood.
Yeah.
Exchanges and so on. You know, that could be maybe done in conjunction with the chamber and maybe equipment businesses here in town, and maybe coordinate it that way.
Yeah, really cool, they had excavators back, all this foreign machinery, just all sorts, all sorts of purpose. Water population they serve, but it was pretty, it was fun to take grand gear, let them climb on and do all that stuff. It was a pretty neat little function, so. I mentioned that to Bill last time, just coming to the council and talking to the chamber about it.
Thank you. Thank you for the idea.
Good photo offer. Opportunity for the paper on something like that.
Yeah. Through there, thank you.
Thanks. Is there anything else anyone might have? Okay, if not, we'll move on to item number six, continuing business, Chautauqua Park improvement update.
Well, the trenching has been completed over there. I know Angie was over there looking at planning on finishing up the electrical portion before the light system. We were hoping to get that this week, but we'll see whether it gets installed or not. I think probably the weather will have some say in that process. Then I know Bruce and a gaggle of people have been down there doing painting in the stone shelter. So, so it's getting closer and closer to starting to close up elements of the project.
If that, that electrical, if it is completed with, I know the chamber was thinking it would assist in having the jump things in the park for Oktoberfest. They wouldn't have to be way back in that. And also, Christmas time when we have the lighted thing, they can actually have more lights closer to the entrance of the park. And we are having it again, so it doesn't have to be something from that place online. If anybody wanted to put up a lighted event, they can make it, they can do anything they want. So encourage your neighbors and friends, we really have a good showing this year.
What would, let me just throw this out, what would happen if the city were actually to do a lighted display in the front of the park? I mean...
I kind of wish we could do the entrance to the park, entrance to the lighted thing, a welcome.
If we could do a welcome to the, I mean, some kind of a lighted welcome display. I mean, I know, I know we're in times of economic austerity, but I mean, is that, would, I mean, it might be a really good goodwill thing. You know, that the city itself could come up with something.
I believe we could get lights easy enough, it would be just what to put them on, and I don't know. What about that arch that this city owns? Could it be put in something to make it higher so we could cover it with lights for the entrance?
We'd have to look into it.
Then we might have the stuff to do it with already. So we'll look into that. Okay, anything else there? If not, we'll go to seven miscellaneous, where this probably should have been visited about. But A is consideration of resolution number 2014-19, the resolution approving application to the Sac County annament bond to the Sac City's library computer learning information literacy area. That's a mouthful. Does everybody know what that is? Would you like some explanation about it, or?
I know some, I...
No, I'm looking at...
It's basically what they're looking at doing is they're looking at putting the, they want to move the computer area out into the open public area, so that it's more user-friendly. And I know they want to make some changes to how it flows in there so that they can use it for more, more purposes.
One of the other things is ADA accessibility, because right now where the computers are, you can't get a wheelchair through the door. I mean, there's, so they're, they're looking at rewiring, there's, there's no computers or anything in there. They're choosing what they already have, but new desks and places to put them. Moving it out, kind of off to the left, I think, when you come in, and doing wiring coming out of the ceiling so you don't have the cords on the floor for people to trip over.
Is there any...
This doesn't have any, any financial contribution from the city, it's just a support, right?
Correct. As the library, and they were required to have this for their application purposes.
I would move passage of resolution number 2014-18. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Curtis?
Besides just moving it, is there some sort of thing they have to build? Or what exactly is the money going to be used for in the application? Do you know that?
I think it's primarily going to be used for the equipment necessary. I mean, it's one thing to move the computers, but you need all, as Bruce was saying, all the equipment that goes with a, having a computer area.
Wiring.
Talking of wiring, she said it was the vertical infrastructure that was required for the electrical part, the vertical infrastructure that was required for getting the new connections to the computers, to the internet, and perhaps some other building things for them to sit on. I know this is a vertical infrastructure grant, and I think that's the vertical infrastructure that they are building.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. Councilperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Thank you. Seven miscellaneous B is consideration of resolution number 2014-20, entitled resolution supporting nomination of Sac City Monument Square on National Register of Historic Places. Shouldn't see any discussion. Yes?
Yeah.
Owns that? Is, is that just, is that the county, or?
It's county's property, yes.
Okay, so...
This would be just a, a shrine of, or shrine, a sign of support for that application process.
Is, is it the county that make, that's making the application?
Uh, I don't know how it's officially applied for. Is the county considered the actual applicant, Bruce?
The person who fills it out is considered the actual applicant. I mean, you, you, the person who fills it out is the person who nominates it for there.
What if the place doesn't want it?
That was why, I mean, the, the county supervisors have already given their blessing to the application. I mean, I've, I've got it ready to send in, wonder if we get the, wonder if we get a resolution signed.
We necessarily don't have to be the owner to do this.
You don't have to be the owner to do it, no. But the ownership is a little, yeah, the county has it, but if you, going back through the records, the ownership is a little vague. It was maybe one-time county, it kind of went back to city. The city gave the county the permission to use it. But there was never a transfer of property back. So I just would like the resolution so that we can say, whomever owns it, even if it is unclear, get supported. It's a lot easier to have, when you, when you go to defend these things in front of a group of people kind of like this, to help say, okay, yes, we have the permission from the city, we have the permission from the county. The ownership seems to have been the county for a while, but it, if it doesn't look that way legally, the city approves it too, so we're good on both sides. I'm just asking, I guess, for a blessing so that we can, to make life easier in the future, maybe.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution number 2014-20. I'll figure it out.
Is there any further discussion or questions? If not, motion has been made and seconded, I forgot to read that first. To approve resolution number 2014-20, the resolution supporting nomination of the Sac City Monument Square on National Register of Historic Places. Would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Okay, next is committee and department here, votes. Are there?
Just as a point of information, where, where are we on the roof on this solar plant? Are we going to have it so that it's not, hopefully not leaking?
The, uh, Dwayne and Tom were working out plans to complete the path process here in the next couple of weeks. They formulated a plan on what they were going to do, and now it's just a matter of scheduling the, the manpower and actually...
Anything else? Okay, if not, we'll move on to eight, the council forum. I'd like to thank you for getting the material on the park road. Needs a little bit more of attention, but it sure is a lot better than it was.
Thank you. Well, there is a few problems that kids wrote. When they come in to reset the play area, there were deficiencies that were found that apparently weren't taken care of, and they're working with Bola, and they're done. Sounds too promising that it's going to get repaired, but they're in the process of still working with them. There are a lot of the rubber mats that some are offset and different things like that. Some of them real soft, and, and everybody's passed on the blame too.
Aren't they under warranty of any kind?
Of sorts. It's twelve thousand dollars, you fix that thing and, I don't know what they got, they just go, they just push it together and added a few new titles.
The company did?
Is it paid for yet?
No.
Well, there you go.
That's, they're, they're in eyes, they...
They're, that's the whole of it right now, but they're supposed to meet with McGinty and see what happens, for one report.
I know that, at the request of Sac Development Corporation, Adam has gotten all of the materials that, as to what the city can offer for potential businesses coming in, and our incentive program. And that's been at least codified, not codified, but it's been put onto pieces of paper, so it's all there easily to see for potential businesses.
Good to have something in hand and send it to me too, what would be beautiful.
Right.
I agree, that's a good thing.
So that, that's been brought up to date, which is...
Good.
The rec center, the community center had a very good open house, and I believe they signed up over thirty new members, which is really good.
They have quite a few renewals, also, we told them.
That's good. There's a lot of good things going on there.
And Adam, Bruce, and I approached the board of supervisors a couple of weeks ago about the development area north of town. And there's a deadline, I think, what, November first, where they're supposed, supposed to get back to us. It's kind of pending, their lawyer, Mr. Smith, looking it over and, and, you know, making his recommendations. And anything else that either of you'd want to add to that, as to where we stand with that?
It seemed like they're pretty receptive. I mean, it would be, it would be setting up an urban development area, really from the city limits within our, out, basically two miles, going just slightly north of Fortis Highway 20, so that we would have a way to work with the county on, whether it would be TIF financing or whatever. Those things would be happening if there were new businesses wanting to locate there. So that we could have a way to help us pay for infrastructure that would need to be put in place for that to happen. The county would actually be the one doing the TIF district. But it would be, it sets up the, we're agreeing to play together. We have talked through the things in advance. So if people are looking at it, they, they know that at least there's a plan and process to move forward.
Yeah, and I might add that Rick Hanziker from Region 12 kind of updated the supervisors and, and the other people in attendance as to, you know, the mechanics of how this would work, the urban development, as well as the TIF district. And one thing that he did suggest would be is, if you could have in place a, not just a plan of how to go forward, but even an option to lease some land or to have a parcel of land of ownership by the county, so that it would be considered more shovel-ready to, you know, start a project if some business were interested in coming to the area. So the more shovel-ready that you can get, the thing that he made, the point is, is the closer you are to letting them have a turnkey, the better.
Yes.
Um, the Sac Community Center is looking at, they formed a committee, I believe, and they're looking at offering a day of activities, breakfast and lunch. And I think late afternoon, they would have a movie and a snack at the library on all the Mondays where the kids don't have school. So if anybody has something they'd like to share, like a skill they'd like to teach, or a game they'd like to teach, they're looking for some volunteers to get this, because if just the staff at the rec center has to do it, and they, like in the early morning, they had thirty-some kids when they came, when there was a late start at school, they're going to need a little assistance. So if you know anybody, you might mention it to them. And if there's any way you can help out, you might stop by and talk to Kyle.
Oktoberfest is a week, Thursday?
Mm-hmm. And they're having it at the Chautauqua Building. That way, if it rains, we're under reps, and we don't have to move all the picnic tables, which is hard on backs and picnic tables, so. And they will have some bounce houses for the kids. And I don't know, I think, is the, are they, is there, are they going to have the car, the, the fire department that they always have? Are they?
I know this is looking a long way out. I was talking to Brandy at Chamber today, and she said that for their annual review on the twenty...
Okay, is there anything else, Curtis?
In Walleye at the community center?
Believe so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Entertainer motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Please call for a vote. Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.